Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and open this June tenth, uh, meeting on the Kalispell City Planning Commission. I'm gonna get a roll call.
Rory Young.
Here.
Kate Walker.
Here.
Pip Burke. Shelby Lechrone.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Joshua Borgart.
Here.
Chad Graham.
Here. Quorum is present, and we also have a new member with us this evening, and just wanted to welcome you aboard, and I hope you find your time on the Planning Commission informative and, and, um, worth your time. So, we've all enjoyed it, so.
Thank you.
I'm gonna look for a motion for approval of minutes of the May thirteen, twenty twenty-five.
Move approval of the minutes as published for May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Seeing none. Gonna move into tonight's hear the public. This would be the, the time where I'll open up the meeting for any public comment on anything other, that's general public comment, so it's on anything other than what would be on tonight's public hearing. If there is public comment, please step to the mic and state your name and address. Okay, seeing none. I'm gonna close here the public and move into tonight's public hearing. There are four items tonight. I'm gonna read this. It's gonna get a little lengthy, but, uh, wanna get it all on the record. So, uh, the first item is file K A dash twenty-five dash zero one, K G P A twenty-five dash zero one, K P U D twenty-five dash zero one, and K P P twenty-five dash zero one. Spartan Holdings LLC and Whispering Trails LLC have submitted applications for the reserve at Johnson Ranch, including requests for A, annexation, B, a growth policy amendment to create a neighborhood business and high-density residential node at the northwest corner of the intersection of Old Reserve and Stillwater Road, along with amending an additional portion along the north side of Stillwater Road from suburban residential to urban residential. C, initial zoning of R three residential, R A residential apartment, and B one neighborhood business with a planned unit development overlay, and D, preliminary plat approval for a hundred and eighty-six single-family residential lots, two multifamily lots, and one commercial lot on approximately ninety-one point eight acres, including lots, roads, and common areas. The second item is file K A twenty-five dash zero three, K P U D twenty-five dash zero two, and K P P twenty-five dash zero two. Colton Bear has submitted applications for Anderson Ranch, including requests for annexation, initial zoning of R three residential with a planned unit development overlay and preliminary plat approval for a hundred and sixty-six residential lots on approximately forty-two point five acres, including lots, roads, and common areas. The third tonight is file K C U dash twenty-five dash zero three. Tuiyan Tran, on behalf of two fourteen Main Kalispell LLC has submitted an application for a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of an accessory-use casino at two fourteen South Main Street. The proposal involves reusing an existing twenty-one thousand square-foot building formerly used as offices within the B four central business zoning district. The fourth item is file K A dash twenty-five oh four. Corwin Brothers Properties LLC has submitted a request for annexation and initial zoning for two parcels located at twenty-five eighty-five and twenty-five seventy-seven U S Highway ninety-three North totaling seven point one-eight-three acres. The property is currently located in Flag County and proposed for B two general business zoning upon annexation. First item.
Mr. President, before we start, I need to accuse myself from the first item.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Spartan Holdings LLC and Whispering Trails LLC have submitted applications for the reserve at Johnson Ranch, which includes requests for annexation, uh, a growth policy amendment, uh, initial zoning of R three, uh, residential, R A one, uh, and B one, which is neighborhood business, uh, with the planned unit development overlay, as well as a preliminary plat approval for a hundred and eighty-six single-family residential lots, two multifamily lots, uh, one which would contain two-hundred-and-thirty-seven units and one with up to seventy units, uh, which would be a total of up to four-hundred-and-ninety-three dwelling units overall. A project also includes one commercial lot, um, all on approximately ninety-one point eight acres, which includes lots, roads, and common areas. In terms of the general location, you can see Glacier High School here right to the southeast of the property, uh, Westview is right to the, uh, east, Starling, uh, is down to the south. So, it's right at the intersection of, uh, Stillwater Road and Old Reserve Drive. Uh, utilities, uh, there's water and sewer that come to the property at a number of different points, including Westside Interceptor, which runs just past the southeast corner. It's just a shot of the project looking to the south, um, from the northern part of Stillwater Road. Uh, the existing zoning is a county ag eighty and, um, S A G five, uh, proposed again as city R three, R A one, and B one with the P U D overlay. And in terms of the growth policy, it's currently a high-density residential in the southern portion, uh, urban residential in the center portion, and suburban residential in this northern portion, uh, across the northern portion of Stillwater Road. I would note here the orientation of this map, north is to the left of the page, but the applicant's proposed growth policy map amendment would include the pink area as a ten-acre neighborhood commercial area, uh, adjacent to a fourteen point nine acre high-density residential area, uh, with a fifteen point four-one acre urban residential area on the northern portion of the site. Uh, the remainder would also be urban residential, and most of that is that current designation today. Uh, allowable density under the growth policy would be up to twenty units per acre in that high-density residential component. Uh, the area is proposed, contains the fourteen point nine acres with two-hundred-and-thirty-seven multifamily units, which would be about fifteen point nine units per acre. Uh, the urban residential component allows up to twelve units per acre and includes both R three single-family development and the R A one multifamily. Uh, the total acreage between both uses is sixty-six point nine acres, uh, with a hundred and eighty-six single-family homes and seventy multifamily units, uh, would be about three point eight units per acre. Uh, this showing the general P U D layout. Um, the B one, uh, area would be ten acres and include a forty thousand square-foot neighborhood grocery, uh, with a hundred and ten thousand, um, square foot of footprint overall, uh, in that B one area. Uh, the center portion, uh, would be the two-hundred-and-thirty-seven multifamily units, which would be the R A one. Um, also, there'd be the R A one up here, which would be seventy units. The single family, which is the pink on this, a hundred and eighty-six single-family units. Uh, open space, there would be a little bit of open space here. This would be the primary area. Uh, there'd be a storm drainage facility, uh, approximately in that location, and then Parkland would be covering most of the remainder portion of that. Uh, as with many of these, it's important that the stormwater area have an elevated, uh, aesthetically pleasing design, uh, that should be coordinated with the Public Works and Parks Department during the engineering review. Uh, this also contains, uh, north-south path, uh, ten-foot path that would be connecting the southern portion of the development up to the northern portion and kind of create a spine, uh, running through the center of the property. Uh, the growth policy and zoning districts would follow these same boundaries. Uh, the two main criteria for evaluating a growth policy amendment request, uh, first, has there been a change of circumstances under which the proposed plan amendment is being made that warrants its consideration? Uh, in this area, there has been an extensive amount of developments since the adoption of the current growth policy. Uh, the completion of the bypass, which occurred just prior to its adoption, uh, has contributed to expanded development in the area, as has the construction of the Westside Interceptor Sewer Main, uh, that passes the southeast corner of the subject property. Uh, the continued development of projects such as the Alview Landing Apartments, additional phases of Westview, uh, Starling, Brightview, and Spring Prairie have all developed to some extent in reliance on the new infrastructure available. Uh, secondly, does the proposed plan amendment further the overall goals and objective of the growth policy, uh, when considering the specific elements of the plan? Uh, the proposed growth policy map amendments can be supported by goals and policies, uh, that are in that growth policy, and among them are, uh, in Chapter One, under the Economy Goal Two, states monitor the growth trends within the valley to, in order to be in tune with the changing economy. Uh, the valley is growing, and the subject area is located in an ideal location for infill growth. Uh, the existing land use designations do not encourage the highest and best use of the property, as it would not take full advantage, advantage of the existing infrastructure and would provide formerly lower-intensity residential, uh, which would be a conflicting land use with the existing and anticipated developments in the area. Uh, there is sufficient infrastructure in the area to support continued residential development, as well as a neighborhood commercial area that would help serve the residential development. Uh, goals and policies relating to housing and business use are included in the growth policy, which further support the proposed map amendment. Uh, additionally, under housing, uh, Chapter Three, uh, a goal states to encourage housing types that provide housing for all income sectors and income levels within the community. Uh, so, expanding urban residential and high-density residential in the area allows for more flexibility in housing types. A mix of both single-family and multifamily developments would be supported by the proposed map amendment. Uh, Chapter Four, uh, Goal One under housing, uh, states to provide an adequate supply and mix of housing that meets the, the needs of present and future residents in terms of cost, type, design, and location. Uh, Chapter Four, under Business and Industry Goal Three, says to provide adequate areas within the community for commercial and industrial development that meets the needs of present and future businesses in terms of cost, type, design, and location. As the city grows, uh, there is an increased need for commercial services and the potential for increased driving times to access these services. Uh, providing for neighborhood commercial nodes near residential areas, uh, benefits the community as a whole by providing services in a closer proximity to residential uses and reducing impacts on the overall transportation system. And finally, uh, also in Chapter Four, under Business and Industry, uh, to establish neighborhood commercial areas designed to provide convenient goods and services that address the daily needs of the immediate neighborhood. Uh, so specifically, both the growth policy and the Kalispell West Neighborhood Plan, uh, provide guidance for the design of neighborhood commercial areas. They should be intended to serve the immediate neighborhood, generally residents within about a mile in area. Uh, they should be located about one-half to one mile apart, and generally be about three to five acres in size. Uh, they should be architecturally designed, landscaped, buffered, and designed with an emphasis on bike and pedestrian access to fit the surrounding neighborhood and provide appropriate transitions from higher to lower intensity uses. In this instance, the proposed property is about zero point seven miles from the nearest commercial area, uh, providing the anticipated spacing. Uh, the proposed neighborhood commercial component to this project is ten acres, which is somewhat larger than would be expected. Uh, the larger size places an even greater emphasis on appropriate design, uh, than a project size in the more typical range, uh, provided that the elevated design elements are provided, uh, through a planned unit development, the spacing and size of the neighborhood commercial area would be appropriate. Uh, the B one area, as mentioned, is a bit larger than typically anticipated at ten acres rather than the three to five acres. Uh, B one uses under zoning are intended to be at a neighborhood scale, uh, with individual retail and restaurant uses at four thousand square feet or less in size, although there is no maximum limit on the overall amount on a given lot. Uh, the proposal includes a forty thousand square-foot neighborhood grocery store as part of a maximum total of a hundred and ten thousand square foot of, uh, building footprint for all buildings on the site. The use, which is included as a proposed deviation, uh, is based in part on the need for a larger size to accommodate the grocery store rather than a convenience store or something similar, uh, in an effort to better serve the neighborhood. Uh, neighborhood commercial nodes under the growth policy and the Kalispell West Neighborhood Plan, as I mentioned, should be architecturally designed, landscaped, buffered, and designed with that emphasis on bike and pedestrian access to fit the surrounding neighborhood and provide the appropriate transitions. Uh, the proposal shows a higher level of architectural design and utilized landscape buffering, buffering along its perimeter, is incorporated into the surrounding neighborhood with connecting bike and pedestrian facilities while using the adjacent apartments as transition from higher, uh, to lower intensity uses. Uh, the elevated design is a critical element of the proposal, and it's necessary to support the growth policy and the P U D. Uh, the conditions of approval should include a requirement that an architectural appearance equal to or greater than the submitted drawings should apply to all buildings, and that the landscaping, both in terms of perimeter buffering and onsite, should be a predominant feature of the development rather than, uh, the buildings and parking areas. Overall, the growth policy amendment is supported by the change of circumstances since the adoption of the growth policy and its furtherance of the overall goals and objectives of the growth policy when considering the specific elements of the plan. Under the P U D, the applicant has requested one deviation relating to zoning, uh, and that was in relation to the use, uh, with the size of the grocery store. Uh, again, most retail uses are typically locate, limited to four thousand square feet or less. Uh, this deviation would allow up to forty thousand square feet, but limit the total maximum square footage on the site to a hundred and ten thousand square foot of building footprint. That additional area for the grocery store would provide a service greater than the standard convenience store while being somewhat smaller than the average grocery store sizes in town, uh, which are generally forty to fifty thousand square feet. Uh, the total cap on building footprint, we keep the overall site at a neighborhood scale. Uh, as with the growth policy, the elevated design in the B one area is critical and is a fundamental part of the basis of approval. Uh, with the limit on building footprint and the condition for the elevated design, uh, this deviation request is appropriate. Uh, there were two requested deviations from the subdivision regulations. Uh, one had to do with frontage improvement phasing. Uh, typically, frontage improvements are completed across the full width of the phase that's being final platted as part of the requirement that each phase be able to stand on its own. In this particular case, Phase One, uh, which is up in the northeast corner of the property, um, right where Stillwater Road turns to the west. Um, the common area to the north of Stillwater Road, uh, in this area, uh, is necessary to serve Phase One with both park area and storm, um, but isn't immediately adjacent to it, um, and there also are no lots that are being developed, uh, within that frontage. Uh, the length of roads, road improvements would be substantial relative to the phase, and deferring the improvements to the second phase in the P U D, uh, regardless of which phase that is, would allow some of the initial infrastructure costs to be spread out without significantly impacting the need for improvements directly associated with Phase One. So, based on the foregoing, uh, that deviation request is appropriate. Uh, I would also note this shows, uh, twelve phases of development, um, again, starting up in this corner, um, and kind of working through. Uh, second has to do with block length. Uh, typically, block length should not exceed six hundred feet. Uh, along the western boundary, the proposed subdivision has approximately seventeen hundred and fifty feet from Old Reserve until the southernmost, most connection to the properties to the west. In this situation, there are two factors that would support the deviation. Uh, first, there are several existing single-family homes, uh, on larger lots to the west, and secondly, there is a steep grade, uh, throughout that entire area. Uh, due to the existing development, the topography, the location of the future street connections is logical, and the deviation request is appropriate. Uh, this is just showing the outline of the preliminary plat. Uh, water and sewer service will be provided by the city, and there's adequate capacity within the system. Uh, Public Works included several comments, uh, that are included in the staff report relating to certain design aspects, uh, including a lift station analysis. Uh, subdivision regulations require a minimum of zero point zero-three acres of parkland per dwelling unit for single-family lots, or five point five-eight acres for the hundred and eighty-six single-family lots, or the equivalent value in, inland, uh, with improvements. Uh, the plat identifies, uh, ten point four-three acre area, which would include park area, although a substantial portion will not be included, uh, as park depending upon the storm drainage facilities and other features that could impact the land as usable area for recreational purposes. Uh, the park area also may be impacted by a well site for an adjoining, uh, county subdivision. Uh, the park may include amenities that would be determined during the course of the detailed subdivision design review in conjunction with the Parks Department. Uh, additionally, each of the multifamily lots is required to supply five hundred square feet of land, or the equivalent value in recreational amenities per unit. Uh, the two-hundred-and-thirty-seven units in the larger multifamily lot would require two point seven-two acres, and the seventy units in the smaller lot would require point eight acres. Uh, the design and development of the recreational amenities associated with the apartments would occur with the building permit and site review process rather than with the subdivision. Excuse me. Um, except for a fifty-foot elevation change in the southwest corner of the subdivision and a significant depression, uh, in the common area to the north of Stillwater Road, in that area there. Uh, the overall site is generally flat without any major topographical or geological features limiting development. Uh, the developer, uh, will conduct a significant amount of grading in the southwest area, uh, to create gentler slopes and better building sites. Um, subdivision regulations require slopes to be less than twenty-five percent grade, uh, to be considered subdividable unless mitigated. Um, additionally, each lot must be able to be accessed by a driveway that's at least ten feet wide with the maximum seven percent slope. Uh, in order to achieve these slopes, a stamped topographical plan, uh, should be submitted prior to infrastructure construction and recertified prior to final plat showing that the appropriate slopes are met. Um, as mentioned, the common area north of Stillwater Roads plans to contain stormwater facilities and park area. Uh, those uses are generally appropriate. Uh, its use as a park area may be limited to some degree due to provisions in the subdivision regulations that, uh, state that land with average cross slopes of greater than ten percent, or more than five percent to the park area having average cross slope greater than twenty-five percent, uh, should not be considered appropriate for park purposes. The specific design of the park area and the recreational amenities installed would be critical to the park development and being able to meet the parkland dedication requirements. Uh, with this area being the only park area shown in the P U D, it is particularly important that the park is functional and provides recreational opportunities that should be provided in the P U D and subdivision. Uh, also, the applicant submitted a geotech report from Alpine Geotechnical from June of twenty-four. Uh, groundwater was not encountered with any of the borings, which ranged from a depth of eleven point five to sixteen point five feet. Uh, the report did not indicate any impediments to development of the site and stated that, quote, "Based on the information obtained from our subsurface, the site can be properly developed for the proposed project with implementation of the recommendations contained in this report," unquote. Uh, the report included recommendations that should be followed relating to infrastructure and construction. Uh, additional geotech information could be required by the Building Department in relation to any specific building permits, uh, particularly any commercial or multifamily construction. Uh, the primary access to the subdivision would be provided from Old Reserve Drive and multiple access points from Stillwater Road. Uh, Old Reserve and Stillwater are both designated as future minor arterials. Uh, the frontage of the property along Old Reserve Drive and Stillwater Road, uh, will need to be improved to minor arterial standard. Uh, improvements shall include dedication of additional right-of-way along the frontages. All internal streets would be built to a minimum of local street sta, design standard as appropriate, uh, pursuant to the standards of design and construction, which would include but not be limited to sidewalks, landscape, will of art, streetlights, and curb and gutter. Uh, a traffic impact study was prepared by Abilene Traffic Services in June of twenty-four and was submitted with the application. Uh, the proposed developments required to maintain or improve the level of service of existing roadway intersections, uh, and all recommended mitigation from the T I S should be implemented. Uh, additional analysis and amendments to the T I S may also be required as phases of development are completed in order to consider other area developments. Per the findings of the T I S, the proposed approach onto Reserve Drive at the south end of the development would require a turning movement restriction, uh, of either a right-in, right-out, or a three-quarter movement approach. Uh, any approach would require the approval of, uh, Montana Department of Transportation. Uh, further, if three-quarter movement approach is proposed, a left-turn lane, uh, shall be provided as approved by M D T. Uh, any additional road widening and right-of-way to accommodate a left turn lane, uh, would be provided by the development. This T I S, when read in conjunction with the prior T I S reports for surrounding developments, indicates a need to address the two ninety-degree turns in Stillwater Road adjacent to the subdivision, one being right there at this northeast corner, and then again here at the northwest corner. Uh, while not immediately necessary, provisions for roundabouts at both locations should be made by reserving right-of-way for future construction. Uh, therefore, right-of-way should be allocated in the southern half of a future roundabout in the northeast portion of the development, where Stillwater Road currently turns ninety degrees, intersects with the L H C gravel pit approach, um, as was indicated in the clarification to the T I S. Uh, right-of-way should also be allocate, allocated for a future roundabout in the northwest portion of the development, where Stillwater Road currently turns ninety degrees and intersects with private property accesses. We did notice a little bit of, of a typo, I guess, in terms of two of the conditions where there were some differences between, uh, Old Reserve Drive and Stillwater Road and the improvements that were necessary. Uh, basically, we amended that and merged the two together, so essentially twenty-two, conditions twenty-two and twenty-three, uh, were merged into this condition twenty, new condition twenty-two, uh, and treated both frontages, um, the same. With that, staff would recommend that the Kalispell City Planning Board and the Zoning Commission adopt staff report K G P A twenty-five oh one, and recommend to the Kalispell City Council, uh, that the Kalispell Growth Policy Planet twenty thirty-five Future Land Use Map be amended to add a neighborhood business designation, shift the existing high-density designation, and extend the existing urban residential designation at the proposed location. I'd also recommend that the Planning Commission adopt staff report K twenty-five dash zero one as findings of fact. Recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the property be annexed, and zoning for the property be city R three residential, R A one residential apartment, and B one neighborhood business with the P U D overlay. Uh, recommend that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopt staff report K U B, K P U D twenty-five oh one as findings of fact, and recommend that the reserve at Johnson Ranch P U D be approved subject to the listed conditions as amended. And finally, that the, uh, Planning Commission adopt staff report K P P twenty-five oh one as findings of fact, and recommend to the council that the preliminary plat for the reserve at Johnson Ranch be approved su, subject to the listed conditions as amended, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I got a couple. Um, you had, on the slopes, uh, slides, you had said there was a hill in the park area, um, at the north se, section right there, and then there's also a bit of a hill at the southwest corner where that cul-de-sac will be. So, the first question is, will the cul-de-sac be on a hill itself with the road leading up, or will it be flattened out?
So, it, it would be reduced. I'm sure that there would be still some grade that would be there, but there'd be maximum slopes that they would have to, uh, abide by as part of their engineering design for that road, uh, which why, is why they would need to do a, a grading plan for that area.
Okay. And then, similar question with the park and the hill, so there would be a hill for like kids to play with, running up and down and whatnot in, in the park? Or is it gonna be relatively leveled out as well?
They need to maintain the depression that's there because that's a stormwater facility, so for, for at least a portion of that area that would need to be maintained. Um, I guess if I can get to, uh, this'll kind of show here. In that area, this is the area that's gonna be impacted to some degree by, uh, a well site, and to the extent to that would, they would need to determine probably wouldn't, uh, impact things too much. Um, the rest of that, they'll, they'll need to come up with a park layout plan, um, that would provide whatever amenities are there. You know, it could include, you know, potentially a sliding area or something like you said, or, or hills to run up and down on. Um, but they haven't put together a specific park design, so I can't tell you what they're looking at doing there.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions?
I noticed that, um, the multifamily, uh, residential was called out in two separate areas, um, one kind of central or planned central and one planned west, um, which I believe is at the north end of the property. Are those different densities? I, I may have missed it in your description.
Um, they're a little bit, you know, part of it is that there's two different developers that are looking at that, and so, there's the main site here that would have that larger number. Uh, this other area would be a separate owner that's not necessarily looking at developing it right now. Um, and so, it, it came in with a little bit less density, uh, partly because it would be in an urban residential category, uh, which is a lower density than the high density that the apartments are. Um, but they've just done enough, um, of a design there to show that something could fit, and they don't have any immediate plans on doing anything on that particular part.
Okay, thank you.
When you're talking about deviation, um, in regards to the neighborhood business, the deviation and the size of the, the use or the building, um, you're comparing that to what, let's say, a grocery store would be versus what a convenience store would be, or kind of in the middle there. What's the reason for having that, that cap on the size for that? Why, why, why the need for the deviation?
You mean in terms of what our general B one zoning allows?
Yeah.
So, you know, we have five different types of commercial zones. Um, you know, B three and B four, kind of the downtown, B two is like the general commercial where you'd expect a Walmart or something like that. Um, B one is intended to be a neighborhood buffer zone, so it's supposed to be small-scale, it's supposed to be a transition from, you know, higher-intensity commercial into your residential areas. And, uh, when city council, you know, created those allowed uses, um, a number of years ago, um, they didn't want Walmart in that type of a buffer zone, so they were trying to come up with something that was smaller scale, you know, the neighborhood store, or a small specialty store, not something that's intended to be something to be pulling people in.
Cause that's in that node.
This is kind of more of one of those nodes. This is essentially what we're doing, and we've have those in a number of different areas, um, kind of in the outer lane areas of town, where it's intended to be, you know, a, a relatively small, not a major commercial zone like going down Idaho or something like that. small, not a major commercial zone like going down Idaho or something like that. But we would create one of those little nodes that would be there. And so, B2 zoning certainly is an appropriate outright commercial in this area. You'd want to have a neighborhood scale. When you apply that B1 zone, 4,000 square feet's the maximum out of the zoning, so that's the reason for the deviation.
So, you think that with the given deviation, you think we're still close to the spirit of what we're trying to achieve with that?
I think so. I mean, it's certainly a larger footprint to that building, and it's a larger area, you know, going from five acres to 10. But that's where I think, that's not all of the analysis that you're looking at. You're looking at the spacing, which is, you know, almost the exact spacing that you'd expect from other residential or from other commercial areas that would be out there. You know, it's not serving just this development, but it could serve a lot of other developments that are in the surrounding area, which does have benefits in terms of overall traffic congestion, as fewer people driving in from this location into Target or Costco or any of that and could just go to this site here. But I think a really important aspect of it is the criteria where you're looking at the elevated design. You know, it's still a relatively small area at 10 acres. That kind of keeps the overall scale of it much smaller than an outright commercial area. But the elevated design of it, particularly in terms of some of the landscape buffering that would be required there and kind of having the focus on the landscaping and some of that design rather than just, you know, your typical strip mall that would be out there, I think keeps it in that neighborhood scale category.
So, perhaps maybe with that deviation also there comes, like, I think what you were saying is the ability for keeping congestion down, let's say, North Kalispel, because perhaps maybe they're able to offer more products there than they would if it was just a convenience store or something.
Exactly, and that's the whole idea behind those neighborhood nodes that we do provide for, and it's seven or eight other areas, you know, in town, so.
Okay.
Other questions?
Can you just put up the condition number 22 that you combined? I didn't quite get a chance to finish. Thank you.
And I apologize, we didn't have time to get this sent out to you because it came up just late this afternoon, but it wasn't a major change. It was just kind of consolidating two almost identical conditions into one.
So, this is getting rid of one and putting it into?
Previously, we had one called out for Old Reserve Drive and one for Stillwater Road, but the way that it was phrased with the improvements on one side or the other wasn't exactly what it should have been with Stillwater Road, so it was just folding it into this, to where it should be.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open this item up for public comment. If there's any public comment, please step to the mic and state your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Keith Regier, that's R-E-G-I-E-R. I live at 1078 Stillwater Road. That, our driveway starts right at the west 90-degree jog. Have about, well, be about over 600 feet that will border this project. My wife and I moved out there in 1988. City limits were at 4 Mile and 93, and now they're coming right next to us, so. And I'm not saying growth is bad. If growth is bad, I'm part of the problem, we're all part of the problem. Our concern is Stillwater Road. I think that you ought to have at least, I mean, talked, the presentation talked about land being designated for widening of the road. Four lanes, at least three lanes with turning lane in there, needs to be there, and I believe that map is east is to the top. Am I correct on that? Okay, east is to the top, and if you look at the jogs on Stillwater Road, they're 90-degree jogs. If you've never gone down Stillwater Road, you ought to go. Lot of gravel pits down there, long gravel trucks, some with trailers behind them. They can't make that 90-degree turn without getting in the other lane. Something needs to be different than what is shown there to accommodate that kind of truck traffic. Another problem we have at the end of our drive, we average at least two-plus vehicles a year don't make that curve. They land in the ditch, and right at that corner, there's a hole with a tile under Stillwater Road going to the Green Commons area there where it drains all of the fields to the west, comes down there, and there's, it's a depression. Cars land in there. Something needs to be made that safer, or the people that buy those two lots there, they're going to have cars in their backyard. So, the concern is safety on Stillwater Road and making it safe for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regier. Further public comment? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and look to the commission for a motion. Oh, let's see here. What motion? Let's go through and we'll start with the annexation, KA 25-01.
I'll move that the Kalispel City Planning Board and Zoning Commission adopt staff report KGPA-25-01 and recommend to the Kalispel City Council and that the Kalispel Growth Policy Plan at 2035 Future Land Use Map be amended to add a neighborhood business designation, shifting the existing high-density designation and extend the existing urban residential designation at the proposed location. And I think I read the wrong one, right? Second. Don't we have to address that one first?
Which one did you do?
I did number one.
Annexation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No? That's the growth policy.
That was the growth policy, which...
You had mentioned the annexation, but I think we have to do the growth policy.
Yeah, I was going, I was just going down the line there.
Yep.
Okay. Growth policy.
I move, someone has a second.
Second, yeah. Second, okay. Discussion?
He did, I did like what he mentioned about the road right there. Did they, I can't remember, did they mention that the road was going to get worked on over there with a possible roundabout?
I believe they mentioned that, yes.
So, I think those concerns might be met.
In the traffic study, I think.
Right, thank you. That's, okay, so that should be addressed and that shouldn't hopefully be a problem. Sorry, I didn't want to forget to mention that.
I mean, as far as growth policy is concerned, I mean, I think it hits all the points for the growth policy, so. Any other discussion on that? Okay, get a roll call.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Kate Walker?
Yes.
Pip Burke?
Yes.
Shelby Lechrone?
Yes.
Chad Graham?
Hi. Okay, motion carries. Now into annexation.
I move that the Planning Commission for Kalispel adopt file KA 25-01 as findings of fact and change the annexation to allow this to happen. Is that right?
No.
No? I don't know what to say.
I move that the Kalispel City Planning Commission adopt staff report KA-25-01 as findings of fact and recommend to the Kalispel City Council that the property be annexed and the zoning for the property be city R3 residential, RA1 residential apartment, and B1 neighborhood business with a PUD overlay.
Second.
Motion seconded. Almost had it. It's good. Discussion on the annexation. I think it's...
Pretty cut and dried.
Logical annexation, so. Roll call.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Shelby Lechrone?
Yes.
Kate Walker?
Yes.
Chad Graham?
Hi. Motion carries. Get the PUD.
I'll move that the Calispel City Planning Commission adopt staff report KPUD-25-01 as findings of fact and recommend to the city that Kalispel City Council let the reserve at Johnson Ranch PUD be approved subject to the conditions as amended and published.
Discussion on the PUD. I think the deviations are fine. You know, I was wondering about the deviation and the size, but it makes sense to me.
I'm not getting any hardwreck about that deviation. I think it makes perfect sense to push that stuff up.
And then also, the block length along that backside there.
I think in this instance, that makes sense.
Yeah, the steep slope and everything right there, so. So, I'm fine with the PUD as it's portrayed, so.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Kate Walker?
Yes.
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Shelby Lechrone?
Yes.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Chad Graham?
Hi. Motion carries. And finally, the preliminary plat, KPP 25-01.
I move that the Kalispel City Planning Commission adopt staff report KPP-25-01 as findings of fact and recommend to the Kalispel City Council that the preliminary plat for the reserve at Johnson Ranch be approved subject to the conditions as amended and
Second.
Motion seconded. Okay, you said as amended for 22 and 23?
Yes.
I didn't say that specifically, but as amended and published.
I guess a question that I would have, and hopefully this is the right place to do it, would be in the preliminary plat, but it would go towards, you know, what we heard in public comment with the road. You know, there is a lot of heavy, heavy truck traffic on that road from the pit, and I do look at the northeast corner there being that hard 90-degree. Is there, was there anything that went through and softened that? As you can see, you know, there's, I guess there's open space park area right there, but there's nothing that goes and softens that corner?
Well, that would be one area that you'd be looking for provisions for a potential future roundabout that would come through there. I think, you know, part of what you're looking at is, you know, if there's existing conditions of the existing road with the existing truck traffic that comes through, we can't put that on this developer to resolve that.
Sure.
You know, that could be something that the city or county or MDT or whatever is appropriate would...
Got a little bit of Tronstad thing going.
A little bit, yeah. But anyway, you know, recognizing that those are two areas that need to be improved even separate from what's going on with existing traffic, but with the impacts of what's being proposed here, you know, those roundabouts aren't immediately necessary to mitigate the impact of this development, but you can see where that would happen at some point in this process, and that's why there'd be provisions for those areas coming right through here. It's likely that there's going to be another roadway coming out as part of additional phases of Westview that would come into that same area there, but that's why we have some of those right-of-way reservations that would be in the conditions at both of those locations.
And obviously, those trucks, if they're pulling a trailer right now or whatever, they're managing that.
Right, and in addition to that, besides those roundabouts, you know, the frontages on all three sides here would be improved to city standards, the minor arterial standard, which is one of the highest ones, major arterials only, which would be like Highway 93, so.
Which is requiring some additional right-of-way in some areas in addition to even the roundabout right-of-way.
Yes.
And then, probably eventually, we heard it was like that tile drain down here in the corner. I imagine that, you know, full build-out, when you're managing the runoff from the construction and everything, it's going other places, that probably helps that area right there where there's that drain.
Yeah, the site naturally flows to the north, so it actually is a great area. It's already depression, it's got gravel, so it's got good soils for retention pond or a detention pond, so, and it allows for essentially the whole southern half to kind of be developed without having to do storm facilities, and then would allow, that's why it is important as that area develops, it will serve as retention, but at the same time can be a large park if done appropriately for the entire development. And, you know, as the city grows, obviously, the city can grow around it, but it is a logical area for the storm to go as well as taking advantage of that large area to do some good park facilities for the development.
Well, I'm also gonna go and say, you know, the other nice thing about this is it's gonna go through, and give a lot of good opportunity for more affordable housing stock units, so I'm completely supportive of the project, so I'm gonna be voting yes on that. So, any other discussion? Roll call.
Shelby Lechrone?
Yes.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Kate Walker?
Yes.
Chad Graham?
Hi. Okay, motion carries. When in front of the city council?
That would be that first Monday in July.
Okay, all right. Just for the record, this one does have, the one that was just approved, or a recommendation does have a lengthy process because of growth policies involved, so there'll be a resolution of intent for the whole of public hearing and a public hearing before any actions take place, so it will be a process that lasts over a month long at council, just so the viewing audience is aware. Okay, item number two.
I need to recuse myself on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Colton Bearis submitted applications for Anderson Ranch, which includes requests for annexation, initial zoning of R3 residential with the planning unit development overlay, and preliminary plat approval for 166 residential lots on approximately 42 and a half acres, which includes lots, roads, and common areas. The majority of the subject property was previously annexed, and this petition would annex remaining 11.7 acres of the tract. The PUD is an amendment of the overall Gardner-Anderson Ranch PUD approved in 2024, which consisted of about 94 and a half acres with light industrial, commercial, and residential components. This PUD amendment covers the residential component in the eastern portion of the overall PUD. Again, red is the component we're talking about right now, the Anderson side area off over to the west, running over to the highway, was the Gardner side that was part of this. In terms of general location, it's just right off of Highway 93, just kind of north of where the southern portion of the bypass intersects with 93. You've got Lower Valley to the north and Demarsville Road coming along the eastern portion of that property, and then that traffic signal just right near Glacier Toyota is right in that location. Utilities are adjacent to the site and are being developed in the western portion of the site in conjunction with the Amazon project right now. Would note that there would be an additional road connection that would come out to the highway approximately in this location that would eventually include a traffic signal. Again, this is kind of comparing the original overall PUD approval that they received last year. Again, with the residential side, you can see with the proposed PUD for the Anderson Ranch, very similar to what came through, but you can also see this in the overall context with the light industrial, commercial component that's adjacent to the highway. Just kind of zeroing in a little bit in terms of what's going on in terms of growth policy, where you've got the B5 PUD in the mixed-use area off to the west, the existing area that was annexed into the city, that would be the suburban residential, and then the sliver that kind of comes up in this area, which is the proposed addition, that would be the annexation, the... that would be the annexation, the nearly twelve-acre annexation that would be coming through tonight. Photo from Demarsville looking to the west. Again, it's, existing zoning is R three with the PED. Area to be annexed is County SAG five. Again, suburban residential for most of the area that they're talking about, there's a little sliver on the tail end of this area that's in the urban mixed-use. Suburban residential designation has a maximum density of up to four units per acre. The proposed density is at three point nine units per acre and meets both the use and density requirements under the growth policy. Subject property is also located within the Highway ninety-three South corridor area plan, which was adopted in two thousand and eight. Relevant portions of the plan, as they relate to this proposed development, include the following. One is to utilize the PED process to address access signage and other issues, so as to protect and preserve the community entrance to Calispel, to allow development in areas with availability of public services, to maintain free-flowing traffic on Highway ninety-three by minimizing access points, providing a grid street system, and providing north-south roads parallel to the highway, with the goal of reducing direct access and eliminating traffic signals if possible. And then access should be coordinated as to allow only collector arterial streets to intersect Highway ninety-three. The judicious use of right-in, right-out approaches, frontage roads, and good internal development street design should be the rule to reduce or eliminate the need for direct access onto major gateway roads. Just zeroing in a little bit on the overall layout, you can see the main road system coming through. This is Bar H extending from Demarsville Road, connecting off to the west, and then continuing over to the highway. See grid system laid out with everything else. There was a little bit of a change in this northwest corner from the work session that we did last time. There was a large flag lot that came in here with a different type of turnaround. It's actually just kind of functioned a little bit better to have that modified hammerhead turnaround come into a park area that would be up here. But anyway, it was just a slight change from what occurred the last time. This is looking at some of the conceptual utility plans that were submitted with the overall PED. Conceptual sewer layout, there's a lift station that's kind of in the center of the residential area right here. This is one of the reasons why those two PEDs, or two parts of the PED were really needing to be reviewed as one because of some of the shared infrastructure components, the sewer lift station being one of the primary ones. Showing that water system coming through within the rights-of-way. For this particular development, water and sewer are both available to the property, and there's adequate capacity in both systems. Public Works included several comments relating to design conditions that are included in the staff report, particularly in regard to that lift station. Would note that storm facilities should have an elevated design and not just be a utilitarian feature, but they are being relocated. There's an existing pond facility that's right behind the auto sales lots. It's being relocated down into this area that's being annexed. And that's one of the main purposes of having that additional land within the subdivision. Showing that road layout, major collectors becoming east-west and up to this point. It'd be a minor collector that'd be carrying that further up to lower valley. But most of the other roads you'd be seeing in here would be local. One little change, this wouldn't be need to be an alley section through this east-west component. But one of the deviations would be the alley connection that's running north-south through there. Phase one of the development would contain forty lots, it'd be the main road, the park area, and the lift station, as well as the stormwater. Essentially, it would be this entry area, it'd be the road connecting over and then developing out this area with the park and the storm components. Phase two would have sixty-three lots, it'd be the remainder of the southern area, and Lot fifty-four would be the remainder of that northern area. The original PED application did not include a plat for the Anderson Ranch component, and it was anticipated that additional land would be annexed to meet park, stormwater, and density requirements. As such, no specific deviations were reviewed as part of the original proposal, with the deviations deferred to this later date. The amendment includes three requested deviations, zoning deviations. One was relating to lot size. Under the R three zone, minimum lot size is six thousand square feet. Proposal calls for minimum lot size of forty-one hundred and sixty-one square feet, although most lots are forty-five hundred square feet or larger. The requested deviation is intended to provide smaller lot sizes to provide more attainable housing while maintaining consistency with the density limits of the growth policy. Smaller lot size also is a result of shifting density from open space within the floodplain area along the southern portion of the property. Based on the foregoing, this deviation request is appropriate. Second was regard to use, as relates to accessory dwelling units. This deviation is proposed by the applicant in order to help mitigate the deviation related to lot size. The proposed PED allows for limitations on ADUs. Without the PED, state law would not allow the subdivision to be conditioned on prohibition on ADUs. In the context of a PED, deviations from generally applicable zoning and subdivision standards can be approved and conditioned when requested by the applicant, as is the case in this situation. The limitations provide more certainty in the development of the site and sideboards and the number of units which may be constructed, which in turn provides a benefit to the neighborhood as a PED, rather than developing the property under generally applicable standards. This deviation request is appropriate. Thirdly was with lot width, minimum lot width in the R three zones fifty feet. This request would reduce the lot width to forty-five. With the reduction in lot size, the lot width deviation would be a natural adjustment, and the deviation is appropriate. It should be noted that the typical lot layout shown on the PED layout for a constructed home would not fit on most corner lots, and that building permits will need to make adjustments in order to meet applicable setback and utility easement requirements. There's one request at subdivision deviation, it's relation to that roadway. Under the subdivision regs, standard streets typically sixty feet in terms of its full width. There's a segment in this layout that narrows to forty feet along the border with an adjoining property. The proposed deviation would have a five-foot sidewalk, nine-foot boulevard, curb gutter, and a twenty-foot paved travel surface. It's intended to be a temporary design until such time as the property to the east, which is under separate ownership, develops. At that time, the complete road would be completed. The proposed configuration uses the logical location for the street in terms of the overall street layout for the subdivision. The twenty-foot segment is similar to an oversized alley and would be the primary access only for a single lot. The proposed deviation lays the groundwork for the best long-term design while minimizing short-term impacts. And based on that, this deviation request is appropriate. Property includes land in the floodway, or floodplain, excuse me, not floodway. The D firm shows that the stormwater park area is entirely within the flood zone, but the area proposed for structures lies outside of the hundred-year floodplain. Floodplain development permit would be required for work within the floodplain, which may include development for stormwater or for park purposes. The property also includes wetlands. Subdivision regulations require a hundred-foot setback to all property lines from delineated wetland. This exhibit shows that they meet that hundred-foot requirement. Parkland will be required equal to at least point zero three acres per lot, which would be four point nine eight acres. And street rights-of-way would include required landscape boulevards. Proced plat shows two park areas, Park A in the northern portion of the subdivision and Park B along the southern portion. Park A is shown as point three eight acres and Park B as thirteen point three five acres. Substantial portion of Park B would not be counted as park area due to wetlands, slopes, stormwater facility design, or usable dimensions. Any reduction below the four point nine eight acres with recreational value would require developed recreational amenities equal to or greater than the difference in the land value. The conceptual park plan does include a path and other developed areas that would be counted as part of the recreational amenities. The overall site's generally flat without any major topographical or geological features limiting development. The applicant submitted a GeoTech report from All West from June of twenty-three and addendum from April of twenty-four. The report did not indicate any major impediments to the development of the site, although the initial report, which was based on larger apartment buildings, indicated concerns with, quote, "up to six inches of seismically induced liquefaction settlement, which may be possible during a design-level earthquake event," unquote. Design-level event is based on a two percent chance over fifty years. The, again, quote, "two main threats to life safety with liquefaction-induced settlement would be structural collapse and/or damage to gas utilities," unquote. It's noted that the, quote, "current intent is to move forward." This is based off the addendum, that the current intent is to move forward with the development of the property with single-story prefabricated homes without any natural gas connections. Life safety concerns regarding liquefaction-induced settlement are significantly alleviated. Structural engineers should be consulted to confirm structural connections are sufficient to withstand up to six inches of settlement, unquote. In addition, the original report includes recommendations that should be followed during development. The building department submitted comments stating that, one thing, the addendum does not provide our updated foundation recommendations, as are found in the original report. Should be determined if the city standards, single-family dwelling foundation is adequate, given the soil conditions, or if engineered foundations would be necessary. Moving forward, all parties should understand that any deviation from the type of structure specified in the report, for example, a two-story, single-family dwelling, would require additional soil studies provided by a qualified GeoTech engineer. Any alternative approaches should be submitted for review prior to building permits being issued. Furthermore, Section twenty-eight point three point one oh of the subdivision regulations requires that the report find that the development of the lots would pose no significant geological hazards to the lots being created or to neighboring properties. An updated GeoTech report should be submitted specifically reflecting that finding and the building department comments. The updated report should be submitted prior to engineering approval by Public Works for any infrastructure on the property. The overall PED fronts on Highway ninety-three south, Lower Valley Road and Demarsville Road. Portions of United Drive are within the PED and connect it to the highway as well. Highway ninety-three is designated as a major arterial, and both Lower Valley and Demarsville Roads are future major collectors in the transportation plan across the project's frontage. Each frontage would need to be upgraded to that standard as further development occurs, which would include but not necessarily be limited to curb gutter, landscape boulevard, sidewalk, and streetlights. In relation to Anderson Ranch subdivision, the Demarsville frontage would require improvements across those frontages. The frontage of the property would need to be improved to a major collector in accordance with the transportation plan standards for design and construction. Improvements would include dedication of additional right-of-way along the development frontage in order to provide the proportional share of eighty feet of right-of-way and to install standard improvements. A ten-foot private utility easement would also need to be provided adjoining the right-of-way to Demarsville Road, as well as all the interior roads. Interior to the subdivision, Bar H Drive, that east-west road, would be improved to a major collector. Again, full-width improvements would include curb gutter, street signage, striping, sidewalk, riding boulevards, and landscaping. All internal streets would be built to that minimum local street design standard, subject to the PED deviation. Traffic impact studies were prepared by Abilene Traffic Services in December of twenty-four and March of twenty-five. Both were submitted with this application. Additionally, it should be noted, two separate TIS reports were previously submitted. There was a May twenty-four TIS from Abilene and an additional report by Kim Lee Horn dated June of twenty-four, specific to the Distribution and Fulfillment Center that's under development on the property today. Development's required to maintain or improve the level of service of existing roadway intersections, and recommended mitigation from the TIS should be implemented. And with that, Keith, if you had anything that you wanted to add in terms of the TIS and the improvements for the roads?
Yeah, there's not much to add except for a reminder that the TIS does include both the Gardner subdivision and this residential subdivision. So, in the TIS, there were phases that were assumed, which included both construction of the commercial areas as well as the residential areas. There are several intersections that do require improvements according to that TIS. That includes the Cemetery Road and Highway ninety-three intersection, the United Drive and Highway ninety-three intersection, which is currently a United Drive. That's east-west section of United Drive, south of Fred's Appliance. That'll be renamed, and United Drive will continue north to Lower Valley Road. And then the Willow Glen and Lower Valley Road intersection. And then the new approach onto Highway ninety-three. All those intersections have some improvements that would be required. So, the standard condition is, as a phase comes forward, that we would look at the current warrants that may require improvements. The TIS indicates that through their phase two, which includes, you know, multiple lots developed in both of those subdivisions, that no improvements would be required after phase two. There would be some improvements required at several intersections.
With that, staff would recommend that the Calispel City Planning Commission adopt staff report K twenty-five oh three as findings of fact, and recommend to the city council that the property be annexed. The zoning for the property be R three residential with the PED overlay. Recommend that staff report KPUD twenty-five oh two be adopted as findings of fact, and that the commission recommend to the council that the Gardner Anderson Ranch PED amendment be approved, subject to the listed conditions. And that the Calispel City Planning Commission adopt staff report KP P twenty-five oh two as findings of fact, and recommend to the Calispel City Council that the preliminary plat for Anderson Ranch be approved, subject to the listed conditions. Also make one note that yesterday we did receive a letter from Lamar Outdoor Advertising. It's important to note that as part of the larger PED, there is a condition that the billboards along the highway would be removed prior to certificate of occupancy for the Amazon project or for any other development that would happen north of the existing United Drive. This part of the project is also tied into that because, again, it's the overall PED. And one of the recommended conditions is that all conditions of the overall PED would apply here as well. Lamar Advertising was objecting to the requirement that those billboards be removed, kind of throwing a little bit of a legal cloud over that. But we did want to be kind of transparent with that. We'd notified the property owners that that came in. Unless the commission feels otherwise, staff doesn't believe that anything needs to be tabled at this point. But it is something that we wanted to make you aware of, and would be something that we would need to consider as it moves forward to city council. So, with that, if there's any questions, councilor, that the commission may have, be happy to answer.
Questions?
Can you go back to the phasing plan, PJ? It's not.
This one here is what shows that? Is that what you're looking for?
So, one of the conditions relates to that Bar H Drive? So, how many lots are there in phase one?
There's forty shown. There was a provision that we included in the staff report that noted that if that connection isn't physically made to provide that second access, then they would need to have residential fire sprinkler systems. So, there's two different levels that kind of come in with access requirements for fire. So, with single-family, a second full access is required at fifty lots. So, that first unit, or first phase wouldn't get to that number. But there's also a consideration or fire code that if you have thirty or more on a single access, then they have to have that fire sprinkler system. So, they may need to limit that if they can't make that connection. My understanding is that there's provisions in place to make that connection happen.
But I guess just if that, if the area to the west does not develop, they could still make one of the north-south roads into a fire access, right? Because it doesn't have to be a street. It just has to be a fire access.
Well, they would need that because it doesn't go up to lower valley, so there's no connection.
Oh, it doesn't go all the way up?
No, so there's other property that would be there. So, without that connection, and again, this is another reason why we moved these two projects through together under the common PED, is that it really limits what you can do on this property without having that other connection or coming up with another way of, you know, getting an easement to run a road up to the north or something like that.
How many billboards, signs are in that area?
I believe that there's two.
Two?
And that condition was approved by council with those removal, which is, we've done on a number of different other projects out there too. So, it's pretty standard.
Yeah, it's a standard condition implemented throughout the city as part of our corridor planning.
Right.
Actually, just to the west of this, the town pump, when that was remodeled with the PUD, that had a billboard on it. So, yeah, and it's a growth policy goal, actually, I think is listed in the Highway ninety-three south. And that was really part of a condition of doing the PUD in general. So, although we're confident, we just want to make, you know, the planning commission aware that moving forward, you know, we feel like it's a condition of the PUD that we'll certainly be enforcing. But it's not always fun when you're in the middle of the process and you get a letter from attorneys, so.
Okay, I'm gonna open this item up for public comment. If there's any public comment, please step to the mic and state your name and address.
My name's Eric Mulcahy with Sand Surveying, and I'm representing the applicant Colton Bear on this project. Brandon Tice is also here with me. He's our civil engineer. Just to answer Mr. Young's question, we are proposing to basically connect the road out west to the highway. So with the Amazon building, it's halfway to this property, so there's only a short stretch remaining. And it was written into the agreement when Todd Gardner and Colton Bear started their projects, that they would work together on those access points, as well as the lift station and the drainage. So that was all kind of tied into their agreement to work together. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, see, now I'm going to look to the commission for a motion on the annexation, KA25-03.
I move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopt Staff Report KA25-03 as findings of fact, recommend to the Kalispell City Council, and that the property be annexed, and the zoning for the property be R3 residential with a PED overlay.
Second.
Motion seconded. Discussion? Roll call.
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Shelby Lechrone?
Yes.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Chad Graham?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion for KPUD25-02.
I'll move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopt Staff Report KPUD-25-202 as findings of fact, and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the amendment to the Gardner/Anderson Ranch PED be approved, subject to the conditions as published.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Discussion on the PED. Okay, we're all good. Roll call.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Shelby Lechrone?
Yes.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Chad Graham?
Aye.
Motion carries on the PED and KPP25-02, the preliminary plat.
I would move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopt Staff Report KPP25-02 as findings of fact, and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the preliminary plat for Anderson Ranch be approved, subject to the published conditions.
Any discussion on the preliminary plat? Roll call.
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Shelby Lechrone?
Yes.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Chad Graham?
Aye.
Okay, motion's all carried. In front of council, same... Same time? First, what was that? What was the first Monday in?
July 7.
Okay. July 7. Okay, we'll move into our third item.
Good evening, and thank you, Planning Commission, Donnie Macbeth, Planner 2. The presentation outlines a request from Tony Tran for a conditional use permit to allow an accessory casino within the proposed Mountain Prime Steakhouse at 214 South Main The applicant proposes to convert an existing downtown building into a full-service restaurant and bar with a small accessory casino area. The total floor area is about 11,068 square feet, with 959 square feet allocated for gaming. This casino use is considered incidental and subordinate to the primary restaurant function. The property lies within the B4 zoning district, which allows restaurants and bars by right, but requires a CUP approval for casinos. The site is surrounded by compatible commercial uses and contributes to the city's downtown re-vitalization goals. Adaptive reuse of this building supports infill development and economic activation. The proposed gaming area is well under the 20% maximum allowed for accessory use. It will be physically enclosed with a permanent walls and standard door. Signage and lighting will not reference gaming in any way, complying fully with Kalispell's zoning ordinance and historic character of downtown. The project is entirely interior-focused. No structural changes to the building or facet are proposed. There's one shared public entrance for all guests. Interior renovations include dining space, kitchen, bar, and enclosed gaming area. The B4 zone exempts projects from onsite parking requirements. The site is well-supported by public parking and walkable infrastructure. All required city utilities, water, sewer, refuse, et cetera, are fully available at this location. A TIS will be required due to the project projected increase in trips. However, staff anticipates minimal operational impacts on the neighborhood. The business will operate indoors without outdoor entertainment or amplified sound. Kitchen and ventilation systems will meet code. The project aligns with the city's goals for adaptive reuse, downtown reinvestment, and economic diversification. It's a compatible use that enhances the commercial core without adverse impacts on surrounding property values. Staff recommends approval of the CUP with several conditions, ensuring the gaming area remains secondary, and the enclosed signage is strictly controlled, and all applicable permits and licenses are obtained. These measures help ensure the project integrates responsibly into the downtown environment. Thank you, commissioners. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? No questions. Thank you. Look, I'll move this into public comment at this time. If there's any public comment, please step to the mic and state your name and address. Okay, no public comment. Now look to the commission for a motion.
I would move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopt Staff Report KCU-25-03 as findings of fact, and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the conditional use permit be approved, subject to the conditions as published.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on the conditional use permit?
I, yeah, I'm not wild about the casino use, but it's good to see that currently vacant building getting some new life in it, so could not agree more.
Yeah, point of clarification. So as you're aware, it's obviously, so liquor license, typically, they have a casino associated with all of them. So that's one of the reasons you see them. So even though the primary mechanism and the cost of liquor license is, it kind of necessitates even the need to have a casino in order to pay for what is a significant investment. But, yeah, that's why Kalispell City Council and Planning Commission has, in the past, come up with a way to allow casinos in a way that aren't the primary focus of a use, while still allowing for that liquor license to be in an area for small business.
N2577, US Highway 93 and 2577, US Highway 93 North, submitted by Corwin Brothers Properties, LLC. This request involves 7.183 acres and supports an expansion of the existing Corwin Motors The applicant is requesting annexation and city B2 zoning for two tracts of land totaling just over 7.1 acres. These properties are currently under Flathead County jurisdiction and Zone County B2. The purpose of annexation is to facilitate a reconditioning shop for the dealership. The properties are adjacent to existing city limits and lie within Kalispell's annexation The two tracts, Track 1, 3.004 acres, and Track 2, 4.179 acres, will be aggregated into a single lot after annexation. Annexation allows for access to the city services and consistent zoning. The applicant has submitted a notice of withdrawal from the West Valley Rural Fire District, and upon annexation, fire services will be provided by the Kalispell Fire Department. The subject properties are designed as commercial on the Kalispell's Growth Policies Future Land Use map. This designation is important because it reflects the city's long-term vision for the area, one focused on retail, automotive, and service-related development. Annexation, B2 zoning align with the vision and help support compact orderly urban growth by infill an area adjacent to existing city limits and infrastructure. The location along US 93 North, a major arterial corridor, further reinforces its suitability for commercial uses. It's already well-established commercial route into Kalispell. The proposed use, a reconditioning shop, as part of an existing dealership fits well with the context surrounding land uses, including the existing Corwin dealership to the south and nearby highway-oriented businesses. Overall, this project advances the city's goals for smart growth, service efficiency, and continuing of land use patterns along a key urban corridor. A mouthful. Water, sewer, and refuse service will be provided by the city of Kalispell upon annexation. Extensions, if needed, will be the responsibility of the developer and reviewed by Public Works. Electricity will be supplied by Flathead Electric Cooperative, natural gas by Northwestern Energy, and phone by Lumen. The site is served by School District Number 5, but no school or park impacts are expected due to the commercial nature of the project. City B2 zoning is consistent with both the current county B2 zoning and Kalispell growth policy, which designates the area as commercial. The B2 zone is appropriate for auto-oriented and general commercial uses along major corridors like Highway 93. The zoning matches adjacent city parcels and continues the pattern of compatible land use along this corridor. The request meets all statutory zoning criteria. It aligns with the Growth Policies commercial designation. It supports both motorized and non-motorized transportation networks. It promotes fire and life safety with close proximity to Station 62. It upholds public health and welfare with the access to infrastructure. It maintains standards for light air and open space. It ensures infrastructure capacity is available or extendable. It promotes compatible and logical urban growth. It matches the district's commercial character. It protects the value of existing development, and encourages the most appropriate uses of land along this corridor. Staff recommends Planning Commission adapt Staff Report KA25-04 as findings in fact recommended approval to the Kalispell City Council for annexation and initial city B2 zoning of the subject properties. Thank you, commissioners. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you for the report. Any questions? Go for it.
Just one clarification. I know that in your report, you talk about it being a compatible use in terms of an expansion of Corwin, but the annexation and initial zoning doesn't link that use, right? It would be B2, and so that seven acres could be any allowed B2 development.
However, one of the tricky parts, because this parcel's been there for a while, is access. So oddly enough, really, the only logical development pattern for this property as commercial is Corwin, because you can't really access the property or get across, you're not going to get a full movement, I should say, in and out of the property, but with Corwin already being there, you get to the south, you can get to the light, and so it actually allows circulation through the property, unless somebody else were to somehow garner an easement through Corwin to get, say, to the south, so they get to the light. But yes, if it is annexed with an initial zoning of B2, hypothetically, any commercial use could go in there, but there will be limitations because of other traffic and things of that nature.
But the B2 still meets our growth policy and everything. So it's not, I just, based on the previous discussions we've had, that there is an alternate use. I understand that they probably have purchased it, and it makes logical sense, but it doesn't mean that that's what's going to happen.
That's correct.
And they are aggregating, not doing a zoning determination?
Yes, that's correct. And I guess regardless of what commercial development were to go in there, if it were annexed initial zoning, the property will be subject to the corridor standards and access standards and a building permit and everything that would come along with that, highway improvements with the trail. So that would come with the building permit as it goes through the site review process with the city.
Any other questions? Okay, public comment. Open this up for public comment. Podium, name and address.
Hello, I'm Ryan Mitchell with Robert Peshin Associates, representing the applicant. And to answer a few of those questions, we have been working with MDT on access, and they really aren't going to give us any access other than the existing northern approach. So luckily, two different entities own it, but they all work together, so we'll be able to get that access. But that is going to be a tough one if something else were to go in there. They won't let us have any other approach on Highway 93 due to the grade dropping and site distance with the guardrail next to the bridge, so just wanted to state that. And then, if you have any other questions, I could answer.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment and look to the commission for a motion on the annexation.
I have a cheat sheet this time. Okay. I move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopt Staff Report KA-25-04 as findings of fact, and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the property be annexed and the zoning for the property be city B2 general business.
Second.
I did it.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Nope. Okay, roll call.
Shelby Lechrone?
Aye.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Kate Walker?
Yes.
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Chad Graham?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, watch this. July 7th. City Council, all right. Okay, that concludes tonight's public hearing. I'll move into old business.
So we didn't have any items of old business that went through council last month.
New business?
So new business, there were two applications that we received. One, it's referred to as North Meadows, but it's an area of property between Ashley Creek and the existing South Meadows subdivision, and that would be coming through with annexation and a conditional use permit. We also got an application for Creekside North, which is effectively another phase of Silverbrook. That's a PED, so we'll be doing a work session in July on that. There's 228 units that they're looking at developing in a mixed-use project, which also have just over 20,000 square feet of commercial space. There's two large lots that are there, be developed as multifamily, but they're looking at doing that as a condominium development, so there'd be individual ownership of those units running through there. And again, that would be a work session that we'd be doing July 8th meeting. I'd also note that we have got a work session coming... I'd also note that we have got a work session coming up on the twenty-fourth. Usually we don't have that second meeting each month, but we're doing that to cover more of the land use plan that we're working on and moving through, and we're going to be doing a work session on just shortly.
Anything from the commission?
No, I, I let PJ know I will be out of town on the twenty-fourth. I'm happy to call into the work session if technology is working.
So we'll see. And as a note on that, there are a number of components of the AV system in here that are getting shipped off for maintenance purposes, and so we're not going to have any of the things we've kind of become used to as far as Zoom and everything available. We will be in person, so if somebody wants to come in and participate, we need to come in person for that specific work session. I think we'll have audio available for people to review, but we won't have a video capacity for that work session. So anyway, just so people are aware of that.
So we're going back to the old days.
Going back to the old days, yes. Yeah.
Jared won't let us use the owl. Can we not go in there and use the owl?
We won't have Zoom or anything. I, I'm not an IT director. Our Tricaster is getting shipped out to get a software upgrade, and it'll take a couple weeks, so whatever that is. If we, if we have the, if we have the ability to do it, we will do it, but we're going to let the public know that if they rely on it, they, they need to come here in person to be involved for this particular meeting. So, and we will take minutes and we will record it, like you said, like the old times, but it's highly likely that you won't be able to view it live time. Okay, so we will be moving into, after adjournment, we're going to be moving into a continued work session on Senate Bill three eighty-two, that disaster. This is the eighth in a series of planning commission meetings. The focus of this meeting is a discussion of portions of the preliminary draft land use plan and an update on public outreach and public comments cemented. So with that, I'm going to adjourn.
Good evening again, commissioners. Donnie Macbeth for the final presentation. This presentation provides an overview of Kalispell's land use plan update, which will bring the city into full compliance with Montana's new land use requirements under Senate Bill three eighty-two. It also highlights key progress, community input, and our strategy for adopt, adaptation later this year. The Kalispell's land use plan update replaces Planet twenty thirty-five and ensures compliance with S B three eighty-two. S B three eighty-two passed in twenty twenty-three. It mandates local land use regulation aligned with seven core elements: housing, land use, infrastructure, economic development, natural resources, hazard migration, and community facilities. This is not only a legal requirement, but also an opportunity to address pressing growth and infrastructure issues. Since March, we've made major strides. We've hosted interactive workshops, in-person drop-ins, and expanded online engagement. The housing element is now in draft form, and progress on zoning capacity and infrastructure is underway. Tonight's session continues that work. We've been busy over the past few months. In March, we held two public visiting workshops and hosted more informal drop-ins at local businesses to gather diverse feedback. Online tools have allowed residents to tag places they care about, suggest land use ideas, and comment on draft concepts. Internally, we have completed the housing element and are progressing on land use and infrastructure modeling. The Planning Commission has held regular sessions to stay involved. Tonight's work session is part of that process. We've met with a wide cross-section of the community: first responders, developers, healthcare providers, schools, and economic organizations. These conversations directly shape infrastructure priorities, housing feasibility, and future growth boundaries. To ensure the plan is grounded in reality, we've consulted directly with those who build, serve, and manage our city. The fire department has helped identify infrastructure gaps. Builders discussed permitting and material costs. Logan Health raised concerns about workforce housing, and our schools spoke to land needs and student distribution. This type of input is shaping practical, implementable policies that aren't just visionary but executable. The next phase is public review of the draft plan. Online tools remain active for comment, and we're planning citywide draft plan celebration later this summer, followed by a formal public hearing. This ensures the plan reflects broad public input before adaptation. Public input is not done. We're keeping the digital engagement tools open through August. We'll host a draft plan celebration event to showcase the full draft plan to the public and gather feedback. Following that, we'll hold a formal public hearing. We're prioritizing transparency and ensuring residents have meaningful role in shaping the final version. Engagekalispell.com has been the heart of public input. What we've heard most consistently: people want walkable neighborhoods, affordable housing, preserved open spaces, better traffic management, and downtown revitalization. These ideas are reflected in our policy framework. The response to Engagekalispell.com has exceeded expectations. The top issues people care about are clear: they want more affordable and diverse housing. They support walkable neighborhoods and mixed-use corridors. They value our downtown and want to see it continue to thrive. There's concern about traffic, particularly on the east and north sides of town, and people want to protect open space and environmental assets, especially around the river corridors. These community values are being woven into every chapter of the plan. Over the coming months, we'll be finalizing the remaining chapters of the growth policy and preparing the full draft for public review. This includes integrating feedback gathered through Engagekalispell.com and refining policy recommendations to reflect the community's vision. By late summer, we'll host a public draft plan celebration to share the completed plan, gather the final comments, and highlight how local input has shaped key decisions. Shortly after a formal public hearing will be held to initiate the adaptation process, our target to adapt, adopt the growth policy by twenty twenty-five, ensuring Kalispell remains compliant with the Montana Land Use Planning Act Malupa and aligned with the state requirements. Once adopted, the plan will be submitted to the Montana Department of Commerce. This effort represents more than just compliance. It's about guiding Kalispell's growth in a thoughtful, transparent, and community-driven way. Thank you, commissioners, and if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer. And then PJ is also going to go over the housing strategies.
Thank you. Any questions? What's a draft plan celebration?
Is it going to be held at the EBIT? Is it going to be free beer?
Well, it's where we gather everybody, that we put together this, get the public together, and produce this document, and celebrate that we've completed something.
It sounds like a good time.
Yeah.
It looks like that, it looks like that picture of you on the Parkline Trail. That's what it looks like. Because I know, I know how excited you are about it, so get the confetti cans going.
Was it real confetti, by the way, or was that added in the?
No, I was there.
That was real confetti?
Well, it was the can thing.
That's awesome. I'm so happy.
Ox and Rex whipped up off you?
They're going to pick up the pollution.
It'll be a future agenda item, just before old business, confetti.
Yeah.
All right, PJ.
Okay, so we talked about the housing strategies last time, and just to kind of recap that, there's fourteen housing strategies that we have to pick at least five of, and if there's overlap, you can't count them twice. But we kind of went through where some of the public input was on that, kind of the different levels of support, kind of gauged where the commission was, kind of gave our input as staff as to what made sense to include or not. And what we wanted to do tonight was just kind of take the opportunity to kind of zero in on some of the things and kind of make sure that what the direction that we're heading in is the same direction that you guys want us to head in. And so to do that, we kind of broke it into preferred options and non-preferred options. The preferred options were allowing a duplex wherever single-family residence is allowed, and tied to that would be a second home on any property where a single-family residence is allowed. Basically, this is the ADUs that we have through most of the city already, and under current state law, we do allow them all the way through the entire city. Allowing higher-density housing, your public transit, place of employment or college.
Does, does that mean if we do A, we can't do E? Or we?
It means that you can do both of them, but you can only count one of them towards the five.
That's what I thought, okay.
So you can't do A and B?
And just as an aside on this, is that we have to pick at least five. It can be six, it can be seven, it can be fourteen if you chose to. There's no limitation, but we have to get up to five.
Guessing Chad will probably stop counting.
I know Chad wants to stop at five. I, I think that part of, I mean, honestly, I think that part of what you saw the last time when we were looking through some of these is that we essentially kind of already do a lot of them, and we were up to really nine of them, you know, eight if you include this overlap, and most of them were things that we already do or are really close to doing, and, and so if you really kind of break it down and look at each one, it's not necessarily that big of a change if you're selective in how you do that. Some of them, like the parking one, we have to do anyway. That's an easy one to count towards the fives. So we say there's fourteen strategies and the state's forcing that on us, it kind of seems overwhelming, but I think looking at each one individually and what it means and what we already do and kind of what we've talked about doing, it's not as bad as it seems. Anyway, this last one was the, the higher-density housing, which we pretty much allow, we have no maximum density in our commercial zones as it is, and that's where you would see most of these types of things. The reduction in the parking spaces, which again was something that was mandated by the state, we'd have to be under this by October of twenty-six in any case, one way or the other. The single-room occupancy, which we essentially allow, it's a little bit more of tepid support than some of the other ones, but definitely support for it. And again, we allow roommates in situations right now where each one has their own room as long as there's the common facilities, and that's what this would be. Reducing minimum lot sizes by at least twenty-five percent. We do this all the time. Tonight, we were looking at the, the PUD, the Reserve at Johnson Ranch was, met our minimum lot sizes. The Anderson Ranch one was down to just under forty-two hundred square feet. Twenty-five percent reduction would be forty-five hundred square feet. So if you think back to all the different PEDs that we're looking at over the last five, six, seven, eight years, the majority of them have reductions in lot size down to that level. So if we're allowing it to happen all the time, all this would be doing, we'd be incorporating into our regular standards instead of making somebody go through a PUD process to do it.
Explain the downtown lot.
Oh, and one of the things when you look at with this too is that, you know, in terms of unintended consequences, you know, if you start reducing minimum lot sizes too much, then you could potentially see divisions of lots downtown, like in the older part of town. And that was one thing that we looked at. The standard lot downtown is seventy-one hundred square feet. If you reduce to forty-five hundred square feet, you would need at least nine thousand square feet to divide it in two. So, you know, by comparison, if we dropped all the waste, say, to three thousand square feet, you could take most lots in the downtown area and subdivide them into two lots. This twenty-five percent reduction wouldn't take it to that, that spot, and that would be true through most of our residential subdivisions as well. So there, there wouldn't be a lot in terms of unintended consequences with, with that, with the existing lots that are out there.
So likely where this potentially would make an impact is in a subdivision that has larger lots, which there are some, so just to be transparent, but likely those subdivisions already probably have HOAs in place that would prohibit that. It wouldn't be our situation, but that would be a situation. I mean, you could also argue that maybe those subdivisions could, should have more density. That's certainly part of the argument. But anyhow, that's the scenario where this would likely come up most often is in an area or a subdivision in the city that's, say, like nine, ten thousand square foot lots. Not a lot of them, but there are some.
And even if someone tried to get clever and say, well, I'm going to buy two and divide it into three, you're going to run out of street frontage, right? Because they're typically sixty feet wide. You go to one-twenty, divided by three, that's forty. You can't fit snow, driveways, streetlights, electrical pads, I mean, electrical transformers.
Other things would certainly apply there, you know, access in, and you can't land lock something, so existing utilities.
Unless you have alley access and...
Yeah. So, yes. Next one is specifically allowing for tiny houses is defined in the building code, and again, I don't see this as something that would typically come up on just a regular lot. This is probably going to be something that, if you did ADUs, would work hand-in-hand with the potential ADU, or if somebody had a specific project where the subdivision was designed around that, you could potentially see cottage-type of lots. But anyway, this had a fair amount of support out there. Increasing building heights by at least twenty-five percent. You know, we've already pretty much set our heights, I think, for the most part. I don't think that we really need the additional twenty-five percent. It's certainly something we could adopt, but would probably be a lesser priority than some of the other preferred ones. And then allowing apartments as permitted uses in office and commercial zones. We already allow them as permitted in commercial zones. We require CUPs in R A one, R A two, and I believe the H one zone. This would just make them permitted. They'd still go through site review. Most of the conditions and a conditional use permit for apartments are just what would get applied through a building permit and site review process in any case, so that's pretty minimal impact with what would be there. Our non-preferred options, we're reducing the impact fees on additional residential units on a property by at least twenty-five percent. And again, there's some equity issues, and it's a real technical field in terms of impact fees and setting those.
PJ, sorry, beg up a second here. Conditional uses for multifamily in the zoning regulations trigger supplemental requirements that are specific to uses, not conditional uses, right? I think I asked you this before.
Yeah, so there's a section, a chapter in the zoning ordinance that is specific requirements for basically standard conditions for specific conditionally permitted uses. Yeah, like accessory, accessory casinos, for example, tonight was something we looked at. There is a number of specific things that anyone that comes through has to do that. Multifamily has the same thing. There's the recreational amenity component and then access, pedestrian access to the public right of way. There's also a provision in that section that says that all those conditions apply whether a conditional use permit's required or not. So for example, in a PUD, you're not doing a CUP.
Yep.
That triggers.
So if the CUP goes away, that part of the zoning ordinance still stands. That was what I, yeah.
Right, and all the, you know, the, the street frontage improvements and utilities and all of that that we would normally look at as part of a building permit would still get looked at. So there's not a lot extra that you get with a CUP in any case for something like that. So, non-preferred options, you know, again, there was the, the reduction in impact fees we talked about wasn't really a preferred option. The allowing triplexes and fourplexes anywhere, anywhere where single-family residences are allowed, wasn't a lot of support for that. This would be definitely taking it beyond the ADUs. Building setbacks, reducing those by twenty-five percent's problematic when it comes to fire codes and utility requirements, utility easement requirements. Reducing aesthetic and related design standards for apartment buildings, hard to quantify what exactly that means, but also had very minimal support in some of the public outreach that we did. It was the least supported. And then lastly, allowing apartments with at least five or more units anywhere that three or four units are allowed, and this is certainly a domino effect we talked about last time, that if some state, proposed state laws passed, like almost did this last time, where you have to allow three or four units, allowing five or more would basically be unlimited density anywhere, and so your single-family zoning would completely go out the window with that. But anyway, that's how we kind of broke those into two broad categories, and like I said, you'd have at least eight options with the preferred ones. I don't know if you want to narrow that down further than that, but is, was this an appropriate separation in general into the preferred and non-preferred? Is that something that the commission would concur with?
Yeah, I, I guess I would just confirm your last sentence in your cover sheet is that this, what, what was put in? What, what was put in preferred and not preferred was based on public feedback. Input from the planning commission and input from staff.
Correct.
It wasn't just throwing darts at a board.
Absolutely, yeah. This has been part of a lot of the public outreach that we've done. So we've done. About thirty-five stakeholder meetings with different groups, builders association, you know, downtown groups, just kind of all over the board. And that's kind of all kind of fed into this too.
Correct me if I'm wrong PJ, as far as process, we would. Weave this into the land use plan update, but then that'll be, need to be followed up by zoning updates to reflect these, which will be more public process. Cause there'll be a zoning text update. To reflect all these in the future. So the, the plan will create. The objectives and the goals that then we'll have to implement later on through zoning updates, subdivision updates, et cetera.
Correct. And, and there's an implementation chapter that's in the land use plan that, that this would be addressed under.
So again, process wise, when do we need to pick those five?
Well, I'd say, you know, ultimately when we adopt the land use plan, hopefully later this summer. That would be part of a formal recommendation that would move over to city council. So we just wanted to get some direction from you as we're kind of. Putting together the rough draft on this to be able to incorporate that in. So if you're not ready to say, yes, these are the ones that we want to go with. We don't need to make that decision tonight. We're not asking specifically for that decision tonight, but the more we can zero in and, and know. You know, that which ones we're focusing on, that's helpful in our process.
Well, from my perspective, when I look through the preferred ones, they address. Pretty much all the things that I'd like to see. Don't necessarily like all the preferred ones, but. They do include most of what I would prefer to see.
Yeah, I, I guess just food for thought for the commissioner. I, I don't wanna say we could, it seems like we could eliminate E. Because it's kind of redundant. And then it didn't sound like there was too much excitement. At least. From. Planning and maybe from the board, I, I, from the commission, excuse me, for J for the tiny houses thing. I, and I, I don't, I. I don't know if it's appropriate to try to narrow this down at each meeting or, or if that's what you're asking for.
No, we can't. I mean, it's like if, if, if there's some that are in that preferred group that you're not really comfortable with.
The tiny homes thing. I think that that's there. Yeah, E and J. And then, I mean, I don't know if, if, I mean, if we do M, then we're already down to five, we're down to five, but I, I.
Why the tiny homes? Why the tiny homes?
There, it's, they're really, they're allowed.
With the tiny homes, so the tiny homes are allowed under zoning. They're not. Provided for under building. So the one step that the city would have to take would be to adopt appendix Q. As part of the building code, which we haven't done. So that, that, that's another reason why it's, it's. Relatively easy to do.
So they declared, so. The penix Q allows to go below four hundred square feet. The building code already allows you to go down to four hundred. I don't think we're ever gonna see less than four hundred square feet, honestly.
That's what I'm saying.
So it's, it's kind of something that I don't think is gonna honestly see anything, but I never say never. But um, yeah, what it does, the building code, zoning already allows it. We don't stipulate a, a house shall be a thousand square feet and shall have, you know, so we already would allow. A four hundred square foot house per zoning if it met the setbacks and met parking, et cetera. Building permit also allows you to go down to four hundred. But this would say require the city to adopt appendix Q, which actually allows you to go less than four hundred. I don't know if that'll happen or not, so.
And, and you know, again, I think the, the main situation where you'd see somebody want to do that is as an ADU in the backyard.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not gonna be a principal structure on a property.
Well, and a lot of those tiny homes, they want to be able to move them. And with this, you've got to have a foundation. So that, I just don't see it being utilized, you know?
And I think that's why I'm, where, from my perspective, that's why I'm saying, I think it'd be good for it to stay in there. Because I'm not looking to, this is just me. I'm, I'm not looking to go through and grab more stuff. Of the fifteen, I'm looking, like, you're right, you're right. I'm looking to count this on one hand, but. But. Keeping something that we technically can already do and putting it in there is something. Kind of goes along the lines of like with the parking one that they have in here that they're already going to adopt that. You know, let's just go ahead and grab that because they're already gonna go through and do it. So it blows, it crosses off one of those numbers.
And, and I don't have strong, I'm not gonna. Do an argument about it. It's just a suggestion. It didn't seem like it was gonna hurt anyone's feelings one way or the other.
But I do have strong feelings for one. If you guys, I didn't want to interrupt, so you guys were.
So you're suggesting E and J, correct?
Yeah.
Just going back to the tiny homes, is there a play for having multiple tiny homes on one lot? That's the only.
Yeah.
There's only an area I can see utilizing this. Like I think that's actually a good idea in terms of getting costs down. And getting people into their own space. But if you're gonna build a four hundred square foot. Tiny home on a city lot, that's, that's a lot of square foot. That's per square foot.
It is, and it wouldn't make sense. And I say, I, I think the other situation.
I think it's a drawbridge alone for that even, so.
I mean, you could see somebody potentially wanting to do a tiny home development, you know, in lieu of say doing a multifamily. So, you know, maybe instead of twenty-four unit apartment, they would do twenty-four small lots with tiny homes on them. Maybe somebody would do that. I don't know. You know, the Vista Ridge thing was similar. They were eight hundred square foot. They're much larger, eight hundred to, I think, twelve hundred or fourteen hundred square foot, foot units in there. But that's where it comes through. And, and in some ways, seeing this in conjunction with the, I, I think it was the sub E and those subsection numbers were. How it was laid out in state statute, just so we could keep track on that. You know, it would make sense to have that in conjunction with the, I think, Rory, one clarification before I forget on that is you kind of said that. You know, we're looking at A and E as being somewhat redundant and they, they're kind of are. I mean, it's like if you adopt. You can't adopt both of them and count them as one. But I did want some clarification on that because one is. A duplex where both units have to be in the same building. The second one is allowing, still it's just two units on a property, but this would allow the garage apartment or the tiny home in the backyard. It wouldn't have to be. An attached unit. It could be a detached unit. Under both of those, it would be still two units on a property. So you're not getting an extra one doing another one. But is there a strong feeling on having that second unit being attached? Or would people be okay with that being a detached unit on the property?
So with the detached, you'd still have to meet setbacks and everything?
Yes.
And the smaller lot size, are you gonna be able to do that then? Or what are?
People have to design around it, yeah. You still have to meet setbacks and, and whatever lock coverage would apply and any other design standards. You know, one of the differences is, you know, separate buildings have to have separate utility connections, whereas duplex wouldn't. But. Anyway, I just kind of wanted clarification on that because.
Okay, can, can you, can you reiterate that, please? So A would require attached and E would not require attached?
Yeah, right. That's, that's the difference up there is one is allowing a duplex. Duplex is, is a standalone building with two units. It's the basement. Apartment or two units that are attached in the same structure. The other one would allow a single family home and then say a unit in the backyard or converting over a garage. And. I mean, you know, personally, you know, what, the way that we usually explain ADUs to people is you get two units on the property. They can be. Attached, they can be basement apartments, or they can be detached units, but you get to mix and match it however you want. If we only went with sub A and not sub E, we'd be saying you can only do it as a basement apartment or an attached unit. You can't have. A separate standalone unit on the same property. And honestly, in some senses, in some situations, that second. Standalone unit makes more sense than having, having a duplex. But I think in either scenario, it'd be just two and a maximum of two.
If you have a detached garage. With an apartment above, that would be considered an ADU then separate. So you wouldn't be able to do that if we eliminated.
You wouldn't be able to do that if you eliminated E. So I think that if, if you want to adopt something here, you, you could just take just A or you could take. E, which would allow two, I mean, combining those two. But generally, that's how we approach things right now with ADUs is it's two unit properties. So what's allowed, what. Is allowed under our zoning ordinance is in every zone. Where residential uses are allowed, except the R two and R three, you can do this two units on a property, whether it's attached or detached. State law currently requires that we allow the two units on a property in any zone where we allow residential. So. You know, it's, it's a little subtle difference between the two, but it's also an important difference between the two. And. That, that's where I, it's, it's not a true, they overlap, but they're not redundant, I guess, is the point.
Would be staff's opinion that E would be the preferable staff, would be the preferable condition?
Well, that gives you the option of.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Either, right?
Gives the option. I, I think.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, in, in my opinion, I think that E makes sense with the number. I mean, we've talked to a lot of different people about, about the ADUs and in terms of the impact on the neighborhood. If you're focused on two units on the property. It doesn't matter much whether they're, you know, a detached or an attached unit in that situation is my personal opinion on that.
So the thing about E, so I'll, I'll jump. For A, I, I wanna see, I wanna see A go away. I think that it eliminates single family neighborhoods. Because it goes through and blends the two uses. Except for an HOA apparently. But. I think that. For E. It, it's applicable more, and I've always said this when it came to the, you know, ADUs, detached ADUs is that. It's kind of a timing thing. When you have a new subdivision, you can go through and plan for having those ADUs. You run your water, you run your electric and everything, and you have a sit in there and you can, you can build. It's planned. It's a, it's a planned ADU, right? When you get into the block neighborhoods, now you're going through, you're cutting into the street, you're, you're trying to shoehorn. Detached ADUs into. You know, built out historic areas. That's where my, my problem with E is.
Right. And, and what I would say is that if you were to adopt these, I would adopt both of them together and allow the option. If the decision was that it's not appropriate in all zones, so do we don't want to allow it everywhere? I think that's appropriate too. I just think that. Allowing it as, as only a second unit in a duplex and not allowing it as a separate standalone structure doesn't make sense in making that distinction there. But I, I think you could take it to the direction that you're saying, which is essentially what council did. They said it's appropriate in a lot of zones. It's appropriate in new development. They didn't necessarily want to see it in R two and R three, which is a lot of the older established neighborhoods that were out there. And that's an appropriate way of doing that. I also know that there was movements at the legislature to mandate this, which didn't get done this last time, but it wouldn't surprise me if it happens in a future legislative session.
Yeah, that's them.
I, I know. I, I'm just, I'm just mentioning that.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's right. I, I think allowing both if we include this or. Don't include it. I think those are the two main options that I think we would see as staff.
You would say that. As them together. Either do both together or don't?
Yes.
Okay, I see what you're saying. For existing neighborhoods with a single family home, a likely conversion would be if there's a basement. They would convert the basement into a unit, which there's a lot of those kind of in some of our older historic neighborhoods now, or a garage conversion. Is very common throughout the nation, especially areas where there's housing crisis. So. For three car garage, you convert that to a unit. So that, that would be a scenario where you can do that scenario pretty easy to go into an existing house, convert the garage, put a unit in there, you know, four to six hundred square feet would be attached. Then obviously, cause we don't require covered parking or a garage, we just require off-street parking. So they would have to address the parking situation to a certain extent. But likely in a built out environment, it's gonna be garage conversions that you would see if you chose that option. That'd be the E.
E would, E would be the like garage conversion type of thing.
Well, you're not, you're not looking for us to go through, I mean, you're just, like you said, you're just gathering kind of our thoughts on it, so.
We're gathering thoughts. I mean, if there was, I mean, if there's a, a clear consensus on something, then that helps us in moving forward. If, if there's still something that we need to think about more. We're not compelled to make a decision on it tonight. And it certainly seems like that would be. Those, those two, you know, A and E would be ones that we might want to think a little bit more and might be one of the options and, and maybe not. It seemed like people were getting pretty good on the higher density near the transit stations and so forth. That's pretty. Pretty straightforward. It seems like we'd already do that. The parking spaces, I think made a lot of sense there.
I'm already, I, I get calls. About people not having off-street parking.
Yeah, and this doesn't say that, you know, there are areas in the country that have maximum numbers and this doesn't put a maximum on it. It's just is. It limits the numbers that we can require as a city for somebody doing a development. The developers and property owners are free to provide additional if they want, so.
I'd like to provide, provide a little context. So that scenario I just talked about, a garage conversion where you typically would have a garage. Where you could hypothetically park two cars if it wasn't filled with canoes and all that kind of stuff. Two cars and then you have a driveway that typically can fit two cars. In this case, they can convert it and do nothing. Cause they will likely already have those two parking spots in front of the garage. Which is a practical means will likely push people into the street, which will likely affect plowing, emergency services, et cetera. But. Doesn't mean they're not gonna provide extra, but the city in most instances in a garage conversion example won't be able to require any additional parking.
There's seen to be a little bit of a mixed. Response in the single room occupancy. I mean, is that something that people definitely want to see in the five or?
I'd support that one.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. That one doesn't bother me at all.
Okay. The lot size one?
That one does bother me.
Okay, that's all fine. The tiny home thing, to kind of recap, it kind of got blended in a little bit with the conversation on the ADUs. Do you want to kind of leave that open and see where the ADU discussion goes? Or is that something that you would just want to allow, given the fact that? We pretty much allow it all already and it's a pretty easy one to do.
I mean, I don't want to limit people's options, I guess, if someone really wants to build a tiny home. Then go ahead and do it. It doesn't seem to make financial sense, but.
Okay.
It's not my money.
Go ahead and provide for it and wherever, okay. The building height one. You know, again, this was one where I don't know if people have issues with that. There, there, the potential for a little bit of unintended, unintended consequences if you've got most being built at twenty-five feet and all of a sudden somebody. Jumps up to forty-five feet with something. So. At, at least as staff, when we talked about this one here, we didn't have a lot of problems with it at one level, but if it's not necessary to hit our five, it had a few downsides to it too.
There's always gonna be that jerk who wants to build taller and bigger than anyone else. So. Sorry.
Person.
Person, sorry. So, yeah, I don't know. I.
We try and think about the unintended consequences as much as we can, like I said, to provide context in an area where I see potentially this having, say, the most impact would be like the South Meadows. Very, so some of that development is older. There, there are not a lot of street trees. You could see when street trees grow and they get big, it kind of. Fogs the sky, the skyline anyways. You're not even really notice the increased height because trees are gonna dwarf it anyways. South Meadows, a lot of older development, not a lot of street trees. Almost all single family down, or sorry, all single level there. So with some of the other provisions of say being able to do a duplex. Or whatever by right, and then potentially being able to just take one of those houses and go up and do something. I don't know if it's gonna happen. But anything could happen. It's. But that, that would be the one area where maybe increase height and some opportunistic. People trying to take advantage of some of the zoning or something down there could potentially do something, but I. Other than that, I don't really see an issue with it.
Is there any opportunity to? Add qualifying language that, you know, talks to. Maintaining the character of the neighborhood? That could be explored? You know, like if we allow it, cool, but if it's totally out of character with the neighborhood. You know, you're, it could be. You know, during the building permit phase or zoning conformance or whatever it is, the, the application is reviewed and.
Off the cuff, I would say that there, I mean, there's a potential for something like that. Right now, in our commercial zones, we allow sixty feet by right, which there was a state bill that. Requires you to allow that, which we happen to do, which they actually borrowed from our ordinance, but. But we allow unlimited with the conditional use permit. So that's kind of what you're talking about already. I think that a couple of things. I think that a couple of things that would come into play is, one is the legislature also limited what we could do as far as aesthetic reviews on, on properties. So, how that would fit in with that. The other aspect is that if you don't just say a twenty-five percent increase, then you're not really doing this housing strategy. And so you could do it. I don't know that it would count then as meeting one of the requirements, so.
Yeah, in general, the, with the top-down approach, the state was trying to take away a lot of the discretion of the cities, not give us any. So, if we put too many qualifiers on these, then like PJ mentioned, it likely, if we were to get challenged, wouldn't meet the intent of just allowing it. So, something to consider.
That could create an HOA. Yeah. So, in any case, where we were at with that is something that's probably still on the table, but we didn't see it as necessary. Unless, again, you guys wanted to include a sixth or seventh or something like that than that. So, it seemed like that was something that was still on the table for, for thinking about.
I, I could do without it. I.
Okay. Well, if that's a general feeling, you can knock that off too, and that narrows it down more. It's, it's.
I personally don't see any reason that, to take a stand on it. I kind of ambivalent to me.
Okay. Well, we can cross that one off. Um, and then the last one was allowing apartments as permitted uses in office and commercial zones. And I think to us, that seemed pretty straightforward. You're getting the same conditions attached to things. You're just kind of skipping a public hearing process in a couple of zones. We already allow it as permitted in most areas, so. That pretty much nails it down there unless.
Were, were you taking that one out?
No, we were including that one in there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just, the last sentence that says is tied with the second highest level we may.
Yeah.
Of support.
Yeah, no, that, that makes, I, I think it makes tons of sense. It's a pretty easy one to do. So, I, I think that helps us narrow down and really focus on some things. We know there's a couple of open questions there, especially with the ADUs, which isn't surprising. That was kind of controversial when council talked about it too.
So, the, just, yeah, once again, a little context with the multifamily, for example, in the core zone, we made multifamily a permitted use in a B three zone. So, there's already a zone. So, we've set some precedent on that. And this would not apply typically multifamily zoning that's closer to, say, single family development, like, uh, the PUD earlier where it's transitioning. It's in RA one or RA two zones, so residential apartment zone, which that wouldn't apply under this because this would only apply in commercial zones. And commercial zones, it's a lot more intense. You'll expect that. So, I don't, because we have gotten a lot of pushback on multifamily when it's encroaching next to existing neighborhoods and single family, which then we have been, been able to do enhanced design in lower heights, say, maybe adjacent to homes and allow heights farther away from the home. So, we've been able to use that. So, I don't think that we will have as big of an issue with it, like I said, because it wouldn't apply to RA one and RA two zones, which also allow for multifamily.
Yeah, I just kind of refining that a little bit. I think RA one, it's kind of optional where you'd want to include that. RA two is an office-based zone. And so arguably, you would need to include it in there in H one. There's very, very little RA two in the city anyway. But if people wanted to keep it as a conditional use in the RA one, you could. I think part of the other consideration with this is going back to the, um, part of the whole purpose behind three eighty-two is not having site-specific review. There's a question about whether or not we'd have CUPs in general, because you can't do a public hearing on them anyway. So, it'd be a conditional use permit that staff would review. And if it's just a building permit, we'd just be reviewing it. So, the, the benefit of having a CUP might be out the window because there's no public review process in any case.
Would that have, would that have applied to tonight? We had the CUP tonight for the accessory use casino. Would it apply to that or just development?
I think there's a lot of open questions, but arguably it would. It's site, site-specific development that's going on with that. And that's a lot of the purpose with that is, is not having the, you know, the, the emotional nimbyism type of thing that comes in with the public input. So, arguably, yeah, I'd say CUPs, my understanding is the intent there is you wouldn't have public hearings with CUPs. You could require a use be conditionally permitted, which gives staff more, because Matt.
All right.
If something's a matter of right, then you can just do it. If it's a CUP, it's a matter of grace. And that would shift some of that discretion to staff. And so there would still be some discretion at the city level, um, if something's a conditionally permitted use and would allow a broader review on our part. But it wouldn't bring it in front of the planning commission for a public hearing and it wouldn't take it to city council.
Which would mean it'd be even more important to maybe create criteria for certain uses. Similar to the accessory casino, where typically the CUP at that point, the criteria is there. Not a lot of extra conditions get added unless something were to come up to the public hearing. But the more criteria that staff can rely on for certain uses, you know, we, we would want that for sure.
So, yeah. So, that's back to the same thing. I, the, the requirements of the conditional use, whether there's a public hearing on it or not, you can still have requirements for the conditional use.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, I, I.
You just don't have a public.
But I think that everything that, you know, using the one tonight as an example, everything that was in the conditions relating to, to signage and all of that were all laid out in the zoning ordinance and would apply whether it was permitted or not. I don't think there were any conditions that got added because it was a conditional use permit process. So, in any case, that's kind of all we were trying to get out of tonight was, was narrowing it down. And I think that we've got a lot more focus on some of those, again, knowing that there's a couple of things that are still a little bit on the table relating to the, you know, ADUs primarily that we could continue to think about. But are there any other questions or anything on that? And if not, just a reminder again that, you know, we'll be doing a, a work session in a couple of weeks. And again, without having the ability to do Zoom or the, the regular video because of some of the maintenance that was going on, but.
Okay.
What will be the, uh, what will be the topics of that additional work session?
We'd just be bringing some additional chapters in front of you that are being worked on with that. So, it's hard to say specifically at this moment. That, that'd be the target of that.
All right, I'm in the meeting.